This is the Cochise County Board of Supervisors Work Session Tuesday, October 24th at 2023 at 3:00 P. M. Board of Supervisors Executive Conference Room, 1415 Melody Lane, Building G, Bisbee, Arizona, 85603. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Roll call Crosby is here representing District One, District Two.
Supervisor English is present.
And District Three. Perhaps Ms. Judd will be back with us momentarily. And it says, members of public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or via phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714, conference ID, or 692-657-797. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. Is Rich available? Sorry. Work sessions are in time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors and public comments. And we have the same crew with us except for the addition of Mr. Coxworth. And this items for discussion is discussion and possible direction regarding the reestablishment of the Cochise County Industrial Development Authority, Mr. Dan Coxworth from Development Services.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. I was going to start out calling on Peggy. I think this started with her and she had a discussion with Rich. I'm not sure if Rich is available for any comment of why this came to my responsibility to look into this to develop, reestablish a new IDA.
Go ahead.
So yes, I had a conversation with Chairman Judd. And she was inquiring and asking us to look into the IDA process. And so I, is she back on yet or no? Well, there's.
Yes.
So she can inform you further.
Okay, thank you. Peggy, we just got started and I haven't begun my presentation yet, but is there anything that you wanted to mention about the IDA and kind of why we're, how we got here today?
Oh, do you want me to give you the breakdown? I think the dairy, I only know I got a phone call. It was kind of an emergency from the dairy. They were trying to get, to do some construction using the IDA or some type of development. And we didn't have it in place and the state somehow was holding, they were there having trouble getting it through the state. Is that the case? I can't remember.
Yeah.
It was a brief call with someone that I know at the legislature and he was working with the dairy, one of the lobbyists, and I just passed him on to you guys.
Okay, thank you. I think that's good enough. And I have a couple of subject matter experts on the phone call today that I've been communicating with and they've been, Rich and I have been communicating with and they've been answering a lot of our questions about what an industrial development authority is, what do they do, roles and responsibilities. So on the call, and that'll be part of my presentation, is Jason Grubbs. And he is a financier and he is involved with the issuance of the bonds. And I'm not sure if Dane Fernandez is also on the call. I don't see him on there yet, but that's okay. Basically, I'll go over the basics of an IDA and then provide our subject matter experts here an opportunity to fill in the blanks and help and, help answer any questions that you may have. So essentially, an IDA is a nonprofit entity that is required to be established by the Board of Supervisors, allowing bond issuers to offer tax exempt bonds, making them an attractive option for investors and businesses, especially now in the face of high interest rates. The bonds are issued by businesses located in the county to help them with capital improvements and help them grow. Some of the benefits of an IDA include IDAs attract business and industries, leading to job opportunities for residents. IDAs stimulate economic activity by supporting local businesses and industries, and IDAs can also support local housing initiatives. So IDAs are governed by a board of directors who are appointed by the Board of Supervisors. The IDA approves the issuance of bonds and maintains oversight of the funds it receives from bond issuances to ensure the responsible use of the money. Now is a pretty good time to establish an IDA. We once had an IDA in Cochise County and it was dissolved after, after 2013 with a failure to file annual reports with the Arizona Corporation Commission. As Peggy mentioned, there currently is an interest from an established business here in the county to bond for a waste management system. The issuance of the bond and associated fees is a good start for the IDA to establish the IDA with a firm financial footing. Also, as we progress towards the construction of a new commercial port of entry, new businesses may also find the IDA useful for capital improvements. The revenue generated by the issuance of bonds is not public money and can be used for economic development purposes. Some of these examples include business attraction and retention, establishing industrial parks, offering low interest loans and grants, workforce development, infrastructure and utility improvements, and small business support, among, among others. There are a lot of economic development incentives that an IDA can support, and this will be done in collaboration with the county. If the board decides to move forward, staff would recommend an initial appointment of three board members to the IDA, one from each district. We are looking to move pretty fast and would like to place this on your November 14th agenda with appointments if possible and with direction from the Board of Supervisors today. As I mentioned, Jason Grubbs is on the phone. He is available to help answer any questions, so I don't have to make stuff up.
Mr. Grubbs, did you want to say anything to us before we ask you questions?
He did raise his hand. Go ahead, Mr. Grubbs.
Can you allow Mike?
Allow Mike. So, oh, there's Dane. I think Jason, if you could just unmute yourself.
Okay, I think I've been granted access. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Great, great, thank you. Well, thank you all this afternoon for allowing us to participate. As Dan had mentioned, I'm an investment banker that specializes in this type of financing and am certainly happy to answer any questions you all may have. And then also with me on the phone is Dane with Cootac Rock, who is the bond attorney who was responsible for drafting the proposed documentation that I trust you all have seen as well. I think Dan did a great job as far as introduction is concerned. And what I would like to highlight in his memo that he had previously provided to you is this is, this by no means constitutes a debt, liability, or an obligation or anything incurred on behalf of the county or the Industrial Development Authority. The proposed industrial development authority is a conduit, as Dan very appropriately said, that allows for private business to be able to benefit from tax exempt industrial revenue bond financing. So we see this type of authority used quite often in the promoting economic development. And due to the revenue that's derived from the issuance of the bonds, it can be a nice tool for the IDA and a nice tool for the county to further promote growth and employment there within Cochise County. So that's really the only thing I want to add was just to confirm that it's no debt, no obligation, no liability. Furthermore, those that utilize the program pay all the fees and expenses for all the professionals that are involved in the financing. Okay, I have a question to begin with. Can any IDA operate anywhere in Arizona? Can, yes, I believe, and I'll let Dane address this question from the legal side of things. From our experience, the state of Arizona does have an extraterritorial authority whereby an industrial development authority can issue bonds for a project located within another political jurisdiction, so long as it obtains the consent of the jurisdiction in which the project is located. So in other words, the Cochise County IDA could issue bonds for a project in Pinal County as long as Pinal County consented and allowed you to come in and issue bonds for a project in their political jurisdiction. Okay, thank you. Can the county audit the IDA if the IDA does not want to be audited? Dane, would you like to address that from a legal perspective?
I'm not sure if his mic working.
Yeah, see, make sure he's got.
Okay, we're fixing the settings on Dane's microphone right now, so bear with us one moment.
Okay, great, thank you.
He's good, he's good now.
And can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, good, sorry, okay, thank you. If I can go back just one second to the, to the first question on the ability to issue outside the county. The only restriction under Arizona law is on housing, so both multi-family or low and moderate income and if the county was looking to do a single family.
I can't hear him, can you?
Sorry, sir, can you speak up a little bit? We're having a hard time hearing.
Sorry, now can you hear me better?
That's better.
Yes.
Sorry, my mic on Teams does not always cooperate with me, sorry about that. What I, what I was saying is to the original question on the ability to issue bonds and finance projects outside of the county, the only restriction in Arizona is on housing. So multi-family and single-family housing programs must be done inside of Cochise County. All other projects are able, the IDA could issue bonds for projects located not only anywhere else in the state of Arizona, but outside of the state as well if, if it chose to do so. So I just wanted to make that clear. Going to the second question on the, on the county audit, the IDA is a, a state entity that is created by statute and they have auditing responsibilities with the, with the state. So they are required to provide audited financial statements and to submit those audits each and every year. So, so the answer is the county should not have to force the IDA to do that. They are already required to do so under Arizona law. Okay, thank you very much, but the answer is no, the county can't audit the IDA if the IDA does not want to be audited. So next would be can the board unappoint people that we have previously appointed to the IDA? Yes, you, the county Board of Supervisors appoints and removes IDA board members at will, so with or without cause at any time. Okay, and I noted that this is a separate corporation, a political subdivision of the state and authority in IDA means to tax or to issue tax-free municipal bonds. Somebody said, I guess it was Mr. Coxworth, this is not public money. So who would be responsible for a default by a business that was associated with one of these bonds? The, the business itself. So IDAs are what are referred to as conduit issuers. The federal tax code, in order for the obligations to have interest which is exempt from taxation, you must have a governmental entity issue those bonds. When we are talking about non-pure governmental, like what the county would issue bonds for its own projects, then there's a need for a conduit issuer. Their sole function is to issue the bonds and meet the IRS requirement, so the interest on the bonds. After that, they are not liable for anything, nor is any, the county nor any other political subdivision, including the state within the state of Arizona. It is a, it is a direct obligation to the, to the borrower. And the market and the bondholders look only to that entity for repayment. Okay, so if a, if a business that was assisted by the IDA defaulted and went bankrupt, what would happen to the debt? The, the, the bondholders would pursue their remedies under the documents, which would include being a secured creditor in the bankruptcy proceedings of that, of that entity. If they had a mortgage or a deed of trust on real property owned by that entity, they could also pursue foreclosure proceedings, but they would not pursue remedies against the Industrial Development Authority or the county. Okay, I understand. So the person responsible for the, for the default would be the bondholders, from what I understand. But no, no, the, the bondholders would be the entities that own the debt, the ones who are obligated to be repaid. So they would be the entities who could pursue remedies. The entity responsible for satisfying that would be the corporation that the bond proceeds were loaned to. I understand, but in the case where that business was bankrupt, the bondholders would be out of luck? But yes, yes, I mean, to, to the extent that they could, could obtain revenues from the bankrupt estate or from the foreclosure of the real property, that is the limitation of what, of where they would be compensated, yes. Okay, I understand. Could one billionaire person buy the whole bond? It, it's, it's a question more for Jason, yes. I mean, that the bonds are typically offered in certain denominations and, or, or with certain restrictions as to what type of entity could buy the bonds. And, and beyond that, that's really Jason and his firm and the underwriters who market the bonds. But conceivably, yes, one individual could buy all the bonds. Okay, thank you very much. Could one boardholder or I, could one board member billionaire buy the whole bond? Of the IDA? Yes. Typically, no, there are, that would create a potential conflict relating to potential insider information. And so no, that individual is probably, probably not permitted to buy the bonds. Okay, what if he resigned right before he did it? Well, I would say that it depends on how much information he has regarding the project. So the fact that he obtained the information while being a board member would restrict him from that issue. Now, another bond issue down the line, conceivably, yes, but, but on the project at hand that is in front and that they approved, no. Okay, thank you very much. I think that is all the questions that I have. Thank you very much for your answers, I appreciate that. Certainly. Yeah, this is Jason Grubbs. Just one thing I would like to add, conceivably, yes, one person could purchase the bonds. However, that is very rare for that to happen. I've never seen that happen. Typically, the way that these financings are structured is they're structured utilizing a bank letter of credit. And those bonds are secured with that bank letter of credit and they're primarily sold to institutional investors, primarily money market mutual funds. So while an individual may purchase it, that's extremely, extremely rare. I've never seen that in the 30 years I've been doing this, so. Thank you very much. Yes, sir, thank you. Is there any further questions?
I'd like to thank Jason and Dane for participating. I definitely could not have answered those questions and at least not accurately. So as I mentioned, we would like to move fairly quick on this. We do have a recruitment brochure. I am happy to work with Jane to get that out, but if you have members in mind, I think we may have District Three covered, District Two and District One.
You know.
Give me your thoughts, Dan, let us know what's going on.
You make it sound so simple, you know, let's rush into this or let's form an IDA and let's go out and sell some bonds because we got somebody who wants to buy. If they're that eager, there's an IDA that already exists.
Yes.
That they can go to.
Can, Jason, can you address that with why you have come to Cochise County?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Like I had mentioned earlier, you know, can, could the Cochise County IDA issue bonds for a project in another location? The answer to that is yes, except for the single and multifamily housing projects like Dane, Dane mentioned and clarified for us, so thank you for that. The, the Riverview could go and utilize another issuer. To Dan's point, the reason that we proposed coming to Cochise County and establishing the Industrial Development Authority is that we will have to come before the county for approval if the Cochise County IDA serves as the issuer, or if another industrial development authority serves as the issuer. Ultimately, Cochise County will either have to approve the issuance of the bonds or they'll have to approve the issuance of the bonds by another authority. And due to the fees that are generated off of these types of financings, we were, we were hopeful that Cochise County could establish an industrial development authority so the, the income that was generated off of the bond issue would stay there locally within the county.
So, and if you're saying, if we, you don't think you could find somebody by the 14th or you just, what's the?
It's, it's more than that, usually that. Why would they not have gone to an IDA that already exists in the county?
You mean in the state?
Or in the county.
They have, and now let Jason address that.
Or maybe, maybe I should.
So why, why, why are they trying to wrap us up into this? You know, and especially with the, all the controversy that's going on right now with Riverview. And if Riverview is the one thing we jump into this with, it's not a good way to start an IDA that you expect to serve the whole county. So I'm not sure how Peggy feels about that. She said it was just one phone call. She's already got someone from her.
No, I, they found it. I don't know who they're talking about, so I don't have any idea who they're talking about.
I don't know the person's name.
I, I think it's a little too shaky for me to say go forward right now. I'm, I'm only one, but I'm, I'm not sold that this is the, the way we need to go.
Okay.
Could I, can I clarify one thing that, that Jason said, just so that, so that there's clarity on that? Beyond, beyond the Arizona requirements associated with establishing IDA and issuing bonds, there are federal tax overlays that must be satisfied. And one of them is, is what's commonly referred to as the Tefra Notice and Hearing Process, which was put in place in 1982, designed to give individuals in a community where a project was located the opportunity to, to speak with respect to that project. And the requirements require that a hearing be held both at the location of the issuer and the location of the project, where there is an entity that encompasses both. So in the Riverview instance, the, the property or the project is located within Cochise County. It is not located within a municipality that also has an IDA. So while it is correct that they could go to, say, Sierra Vista, which does have an IDA, Sierra Vista's approval authority under the federal tax laws is limited to the jurisdictional limits of the city of Sierra Vista. And we, and so the project would then need to approach Cochise County Board of Supervisors to hold a separate hearing and then also to receive the approval to the issuance of the bonds solely for purposes of the federal tax provision. And so it's slightly different and, and more limited than if they were giving the approval to a Cochise IDA if it were created. It would be slightly different, although done through the same approval process. The one point that Jason did mention is that the fees that are typically generated are generated at the issuer level. So if, if the project were to seek approval with Sierra Vista IDA, they would still need to come back to Cochise County to get the limited approval, but the funds that are generated in issuer fees and ongoing fees that IDAs in the state of Arizona charge for these projects to utilize or to access the bond issuing powers would go to Sierra Vista and stay with Sierra Vista. I'm, I'm not commenting on whether, whether you should approve or not approve. I just wanted to be clear that on this project, there is, there would still be a need to approach the county for an approval. It just wouldn't be tied if there were another IDA used. So I just wanted to clarify, that's all.
But you keep using the term Sierra Vista, there's also a Douglas ID.
Same, for the same reasons, I'm not sure.
Same issue, unfortunately, yes, same issue.
I think the Sierra Vista IDA is a lot more aggressive and active?
Absolutely, I, I'll certainly admit that. But if we're looking at one of the reasons for doing this, because of the projects that may surround the, the new commercial port, then we probably should be looking at how do we help the Douglas IDA to be more aggressive and, and to sell those products instead of, I always hate for us to take on something that someone else is doing. We, we've got the things that we're mandated to do. And I have to tell you, I've served on the board when we had an IDA and it's not all rosy and.
Were you elected at the time?
Yes.
That's not allowed.
No, I didn't serve on the board. I said, I served on this board.
Oh, I got you, okay, just to clarify.
When the county had an IDA.
Yeah.
And it's more difficult than, than you think to find qualified people who aren't just going to be led around by the nose by the, the people who are trying to sell their product. And, and so I guess if you ask me at this moment, and I have a pretty, pretty good sized geographic district, who I would put on as one person on a three-member IDA board, I could not give you an answer. Because there isn't anyone that rises in my estimation at this point that could take on or would be willing to take on that responsibility. So I, and I'm not willing to allow a company to come in and, what do they call them, headhunters? Headhunt somebody for me to put on the IDA? So that's how I feel right now. Are the stars aligned or what?
I guess, I don't know. I'm losing it.
And Peggy, you said you don't even know the person that they're talking about for your district?
I, I haven't been approached with that information. I would suggest someone like George Scott, who is the Southeastern Arizona Development Group leader. He's, he's very involved and he would, he would be excellent, but he's more of a community promoter. I'm thinking for these board members, they almost need to be, you know, they need to be bankers and, you know, someone that's into that sort of thing. Would that be true?
Well, let me say this about that, as far as somebody being a banker, tax-free municipal bonds violate free market economics because otherwise, if it wasn't for the opportunity to have this tax-free municipal bond, they'd be going to a bank or some other lending source for the loan.
Maybe I'm just feeling closed in on it, you know, and, and maybe it's not a bad idea. I just, I don't like to duplicate if somebody else is doing something just so we can put the Cochise County tag on it. And I realize that if they went through another IDA, they're going, well, golly, well, what if I get to the county and they say no? And so they're feeling like that if we set up a county IDA, that we certainly wouldn't turn down a county IDA, but we might turn down. but we might turn down another organization's IDA. So I see where they're coming from, but I'm not ready to jump into that right now.
Yeah, I'd just like to add. Absolutely, thank you. Just add one thing on the, on the tax exempt comment. You know, this is, you know, tax exempt from the interest. And so it was designed by the Internal Revenue Code to help promote economic development within a various number of sectors, affordable housing, small issue manufacturing and solid waste disposal recycling. You know, these, these types of bonds quite commonly utilize bank financing. As I mentioned earlier, this would utilize a bank letter of credit and actually have participation by Arizona banks in the financing. So just, just wanted to add that.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that and I appreciate your comment. And I would say that although many would be in favor of lower interest rates being good for investors, we as a government are not in the, generally not in the business of making money. And so I'm generally not in the, in favor of so-called enterprise funds either, which would include the trash system. But what I've seen, just, just having to do with the trash system is, is they're working on such a fine margin of profit. All they're trying to do is break even, basically. But, but anyway, that's how I feel about a government being in an enterprise fund, so to speak. Are there further items of discussion? If not, then the next meeting is on Tuesday, November 7th at 10:00 AM in the Board of Supervisors Executive Conference Room for a special meeting. And thank you, gentlemen, for your participation with us. And thank you for joining us, Madam Judd. This meeting is adjourned.